We'll find out. Of course we do. All right, we get a call to order. This is the Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board. My name is Daniel Olson. I'm sub-chairing for Jeff Pollak, who is absent today. This is the Historic Preservation -- excuse me, Historic Preservation Board. Regular meeting for Thursday, May 16th at 5:30 PM. Do we have any reason for anybody to recuse themselves? Do we have any agenda?
I want to open the meeting first.
First?
Yeah.
Motion to open the meeting?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Member Olson?
Excuse me?
Where do you see the agendas?
They're on the table like when you walk in. Next to the closet desk. Member Olson? Oh, yes, please.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubravsky?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, so before we start, does anyone have any reason to recuse themselves for any of the items on the agenda?
I do not.
I do not?
No.
Okay. And we'll start with the first item on the agenda is 34 Church Street. So you guys want to come up? Let's get these chairs out in front for you guys.
Hold them as close to the speaker as we can.
Okay, like this.
Yeah.
And before we get started, just this applies to all applicants. We do not have a full board tonight. You are -- you have the right to a full board, at least in terms of votes. So if you, after, you know, reviewing your application, if you want to table it so we have a full board, that is well within your right.
Are you able to vote without a full board?
We are.
Yeah.
But if you feel like it's not in your favor.
Okay.
Can you say that after the vote?
Yeah.
Thanks for -- yeah, thanks for -- yes.
So you see in front of you, the application that we put forth for an addition to our home, which is absorbing the deck, the existing deck. We have applied and been two floor zoning board approval for some additional space that would extend our kitchen area, absorb the deck. And everything matches existing. We are going to use one of the windows as part of the addition and existing window as part of the addition. And then the other side of the windows facing Chase Bank parking lot is the same size as an existing window in the house. So really, it's an extension. It creates more living space for us as a family and protects us from some -- just from the viewpoint of the bank into our home. So it's -- that's the proposal.
The variance also kind of cleans up sort of a hanging, I don't know how you, a cantilever, I don't know how you call the piece of space that's basically just hanging in the air right now.
Cantilever.
If you look at the front of our house, it's almost like an unfinished foundation. There's a portion of the house that's just kind of hanging there and it makes the front a little jagged. So part of the idea of the addition was actually just squaring off the front of the -- kind of cleaning up a little bit as well as the other benefits of the bank and the extra space.
Any questions?
I want to just get caught up on the where part of the house is hanging.
It's kind of funny to see. So if you look from --
Can you see it on this photograph?
Um, yeah, uh, actually, yes, you can. It's just very dark. So it's actually this portion. So you see how there's a corner here?
Yes.
So it's right underneath here. This is basically just open air, basically underneath that.
And you're going to put a bona fide foundation under there?
Yeah, because the foundation is going to come out, um, so...
Well, something still has to collect there.
Here we go. So the, actually, I had this update. Sorry, I didn't sleep last night. I came home on a red eye, so.
Yeah, he was so nervous.
Yeah, no, not for this, not for this. I just, I would have slept, I think, but I just couldn't. So if you look at this square here, and I think if you can --
Is this bit here, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, exactly. That square, that square is open air. So the foundation only follows along here and then it comes here. So the foundation currently doesn't even extend the whole length of the deck. That inside of the deck is --
I'm thinking maybe this little square right here, is that where it's?
That is. Yeah, that's exactly right.
Hanging, but the rest of it is foundation?
Yes, yeah, there's a foundation out here.
The kitchen there?
Yep, exactly. So the foundation --
Get a foundation.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, so that would be nice. So the foundation is proposed, actually going to be, you know, square, square everything off.
Right, it's coming off of this dining room corner.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I get a question or two about, sorry, two pieces of paper. About window sizes. It's on the, I'm sorry, it's on the rear of the house. Steve, the rear of this house is visible?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I recognize this as your lounge, AKA TV room or something, right?
Yes.
These windows being high, I can understand why you want them.
And there's a fence. So the fence actually comes up almost to the height of those windows. So there's actually a, obviously, the view is taking it all the way to the ground, but this is actually, because it's the parking lot, there's a nine-foot tall fence.
Well, but the fence might come down sometime and the windows are still going to be there.
Yes.
So a fence is okay, and I understand that. But I guess I would, I think a more rectilinear rather than square window here would be more appropriate, in my opinion, longer than it is tall is our -- now is, now this is existing. So this is the only existing square window.
No, there's here.
There's two other ones on the other side of the house.
On the left elevation.
Well.
Right here.
Yeah, okay.
And then, I mean, the --
And then the ones on the bottom too.
Well.
I mean, it's probably the same, you want privacy there, though, right?
Yeah, and so that is where it is. It's not close to the road, it's close to the Chase Bank parking lot. And people can actually see into our home. And have commented, "Oh, I saw you cooking dinner last night." You have the natural light to come in, but --
And if I can find you, again, the existing window is pretty much the same dimensions on the other side. Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Nobody asked me when these went in, so.
Yeah, so you've got those high windows on that own purpose.
Yeah, and what we essentially did was that we measured, and what we'd like is, you know, the same size. It's just around the corner from that. It's a square window, so we did two square on each kind of side of the house, but to keep the privacy in mind.
All right, I understand that issue. Have you been before this board before?
Couple of times.
And the porch?
Yes, okay.
I remember the porch.
Yes, you came over.
Oh, that's right, yeah, everyone came to the front, yeah.
Yes, we made a field trip. Site visit, yeah. All right, well, despite my feelings about design, I understand the need for privacy.
Yeah. And it is the rear of the house. I know it's under, you can see it, but it isn't at the quieter part of the view shed of the house for windows of that style. Any questions?
Uh, do we have all the materials?
Yeah.
That match existing colors and materials in the new? I'm sorry, does it say in your application what material the new windows will be?
They will all match existing. So we've been in touch with Pella windows. Those are the call sheets for Pella windows.
And the existing are Pella wood windows?
Wood windows. And we will reuse one existing window is what we're doing.
Thank you for reusing.
Thank you for actually having someone come inspect them. Yeah, so how, we got to talk about that as far as the bay windows too. How do you guys want to go about that? Do you want that to be part of the entire approval? Should that be separate? Because the recommendation was pretty much to leave them alone.
To restore the windows.
Yeah, and not to replace them. So how should we move forward with that?
I actually interpreted his email to differently. That he said that they're, you know, could understand the consideration with the age of them to include in the project.
Yeah.
I don't want to hold up this in favor of that. So, uh, so I don't know, maybe there was an interpretation that I didn't understand, but at the very end.
Yeah.
Blake does say, "Since this bay is a part of previous addition, of a previous addition to the home, there's a little abuscation of the original character of the home in upgrading the bay windows." Also, it's been altered significantly from its --
Yeah, from what I understand, there was a fire and part of the fire, managing the fire, they blew out the windows. That one was not full now for a reason.
Probably the fire was in another location in the house.
And he says it would benefit the overall cohesion of the design to replace these windows with the bits of the ceiling that were attached to it.
I think, yeah, that was the part that we were --
Yeah.
Yeah.
That usually, because we weren't expecting.
And usually, they are very, this one is definitely a little bit more gray as far as the bay windows is Blake's recommendation.
Yeah.
So that's why I want to ask you guys about how you want to encompass our --
So what we did not, uh, we didn't bring the tall, or the, like, spec sheet for those? I don't --
We were assuming that would be separate.
They would be the same.
You're replacing them in kind, right? You're not changing the configuration, you're just replacing the interior part.
Well, I'm not totally educating them to say, like, making sure that they're more modern. Modern, when I say is the, like, the, yeah, new.
New, but to match existing, yeah.
The existing, and maybe how they open.
So could you find those exact windows sizes and patterns in the windows that you presented for the addition of that make and model from Pella?
Potentially. We have to do that research, but.
We came in thinking this would be a separate, like, so we're not, I think the bottom line is we're probably not going for the approval of bay window changes as part of this, but.
We'll come back.
We may have to come back, because we also don't have the sheets or we haven't looked at what was where.
But is there a way to approve it if they wanted to?
Just to save some time, because, I mean, the thing that would require approval is if you plan to change, like, the mullions and you plan to change the design completely.
No, we love the design of the window. We love all of that, it's just to be a new window.
You're just replacing the interior part of the window with windows that look just like that, but are a little made than you.
Always.
Exactly.
Is it, I'm asking.
I'm sorry.
We were looking to, we weren't looking to change the design. We were looking for more energy, kind of like better, just better windows and design.
Yeah.
So when we were talking with him about it, when he was saying, "Yeah, I can fix this or fix that," again, it was, it was nice, but a nice surprise that he said, "Oh, yeah, it would actually be cohesive, because you're getting new Pella windows that are matching the design already." You could get three more that would match the design across this bay window.
Yeah. I guess what we're asking is, should we be framing our approval in a way that allows that without you having to come back to us? Or would you prefer to submit another application at a future date when you do know what you want?
If it's possible to do the first, that would be preferable.
If it's possible to save time, absolutely.
And then probably we want to order them.
Yeah, I was going to say, order them most beneficial.
The canal ran past the front door where State Street is now located. Have you ever seen this document?
Nope. Yeah, actually, I may have seen it, but I don't know what you may have.
It says that the house is --
Oh, yes, you know, I did know this. Yes, the canal ran past the front door where State Street is now located, yes.
But you'd like to have this for additional information.
We have an electronic version of that.
I kind of doubt it.
Why are you looking?
No, you can get those on the Village website.
You can get the blue sheets.
Yeah, but on certain homes, they have these ones too.
Yeah.
Yeah, on the website.
This, um, this is a total aside. This is dated June 1967, and it says that the clavord --
Yes.
It is now covered with asbestos shingles. Is that, is that the case?
No, but then there was another, maybe in the green sheet, where it was, there are cedar shingles now.
Okay.
So again, matching existing cedar shingles.
No, I'm just hoping that you don't have asbestos siding.
Me too. I'm pretty sure --
It looks, it looks a lot like, you know, concrete asbestos, potentially, but yeah, those are some pretty big cedar.
We had someone once when we were looking, again, because, like any house and building, you know, it's got some drafts to it. And we had someone come do a very quick energy assessment from the outside and looking. And one of the things they were looking for was what's underneath these cedar shingles to check to that. And they had a moment of, you know, what is under there? And then they were like, "Oh, no, this is, this is just the, like, cedar shingles." I mean, they only were doing that on a couple of parts of the house, so I can't.
Yeah.
It wasn't any kind of like official assessment, but I remember them considering that.
I recall my home inspector, he was like, "Well, are you planning on getting your siding?" "No, well, if it is or isn't, it's just there."
Yeah, this was kind of, this was considering.
You may run into an issue if you do have it in the back when they have to rip it off.
Right.
You would have to have it especially --
There would be an abatement project.
Yeah.
So.
No, are you saying no?
No, they don't.
No, they don't what?
If they had asbestos siding, they have a right as a homeowner to remove and dispose it themselves if you not have to have a special.
If they take it off personally themselves, Steve, I'm very familiar with this. If they take it off themselves, that's one thing. But if a contractor is there, it's an abatement contract. You have to have an abatement, specialty abatement.
We're going down a different road. So I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a question. Do we want to waive a window application, because if they come apply for windows again?
This is all part of the same.
Yeah, this is all part of the same package. We're going to prove it, and we're going to do it. So I'll make a motion to approve this as presented.
I'll second.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubravsky?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can I just say, do we want to put condition on the, um?
Yes, on the make and material.
Yeah, and well, on the design of the bay?
Yeah.
That's just a replacement of the similar sized windows in the design, and that doesn't change?
So we'll do findings of facts and we'll say that we've approved this application as presented in full for the addition at 34 Church Street with the approval of replacement windows as suggested by Blake held with the existing material being matched, the existing design being matched, including window patterns, um... Mullion size, montons. And then I want to work in, where's that part of Pella?
While you're looking, I would also include in the findings of fact that this home was constructed about 1820. However, since that time, modifications to windows and sightings have already been made.
And that those bay windows, I believe, I believe that they're lifestyle double hung without HGP classic white. Does that sound familiar? As far as the make and model?
That's what Pella said.
Maybe they're not double hung, oh, yeah, they would be double hung.
Double hung.
Because double hung is what they have there, once it go up and down.
Yeah, yeah, they are double hung.
Okay.
Yeah, they both slide.
That was really in the nature of the amendment to approve. So I would say somebody else second that motion.
Second motion. In other words, we're voting on the specifics of what you just said.
Nice.
Okay, so we're done?
I think we did.
Do you have a different? I'll take a recall on the amendment part of it, please. Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Dubravsky?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Kevin. Appreciate it very much.
Thanks.
Good luck. Have fun tearing out your kitchen?
Have fun.
No, we're just adding.
Just, yeah. For shoes.
All right, next we'll do one gasket in place.
Is the upper computer?
There's one gasket in place here.
Any other service?
I know the button, I don't see the button.
Okay, we'll go to 25 Eastview Terrace. How you doing? Hi. So tell us about your application and what you're looking to do.
Homeowner, our house was built in 1940. And in the 90s, the previous homeowner put on an addition. And the bulk of the project is removing that addition. We're going to separate the new addition from the original house with a 10-foot connector, single-story connector, and then build a one-and-a-half story addition next to it.
Okay.
The other, there's also a screen porch off of that addition in the back. And then we're putting in a new dorm window on the front side of the house.
Okay. So I think the main thing to talk about here is approval of a demolition first.
Okay.
So how would we, how would this board go about that? Do we need to make a motion to approve a demolition before we can?
Since they have their plans ready for what is to go in place as well? Doesn't make sense really. I think, I think that you'll actually analyze the demolition on its funnel.
Okay.
And then if you decide that it can be demolished, you make it subject to approval of whatever's going with this.
Okay.
That's a downside.
So have you considered other options for not demolishing that addition? Or is there anything that you guys have thought of as the homeowner and architect that you could work into not demolishing it? Because that's a tough ask for our board as far as this village and obviously demolishing anything, yeah, is a big ask.
Right. I mean, we did consider other options, trying to reconfigure the space, but ultimately decided both from the interior plan as well as the exterior, how it would look, that removing the addition would be the best way to go.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're literally taking it back to the original footprint of the 1940s house and then redoing the add-on.
Okay. And there's not an option to use the addition from 1991, which is, you know, 30 years old now and part of the house, and leave that and then create an addition off of that? Or a floor plan off of that?
What add to it?
Yeah, I mean, we explored a number of different ideas, but ultimately decided that what would work best for us was to remove what's existing.
Okay.
Yeah, the addition is kind of ground onto housing that doesn't follow historic preservation guidelines. So in two places, it's one off the north, one off the backside and one off the sidewalk we're adding on now. So they, it was done very poorly and massive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a picture in my mind of what it looks like now, but I see what you're trying to do here is change, because right now it's like very massive and not like 1940s architecture, we're going to separate that out.
You know, we're trying to use the technique of creating an addition that is obviously an addition by using a connector technique. And there's also the piece on that, which is compromises a beautiful bay bump out window off the dining room, because it's hanging right off the side of that. So.
Think there are existing pictures in the packet?
You know, I, have you got this roof pitch correct? I'm looking at this photo here. This, it could be the photography. This roof looks much steeper than what's being portrayed here.
Well, we had, we had the fortunate aspect of having the original blueprints, which I'm happy to pull out.
Yeah, it's great.
So we matched the pitch exactly to the construction documents from 1940. They're beautiful drawings. I'd be happy to share them with you guys, but it's, so I think it's a perspective thing from the photograph that you're seeing.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to make a comment about your drawings. The views are not labeled. I don't know what I'm looking at.
Yeah, it was a little, it was a little confusing to understand what side of the house, who what's existing and what's not.
Yeah, there's no indication, there's no clear indication. This is existing, this is addition. This doesn't say front elevation or anything. I'm shuffling through all these drawings and I don't know what I'm looking at.
And just as a point of clarification, your driveway, just because that's a good, like, reference point, how to reference all of your drawings. The driveway splits into a Y. The right side goes to an existing garage.
Correct.
And then the left side currently is just kind of more of a, like a dead end? Is that, is that what we're looking at here?
Parking pad.
Okay, parking pad. And then you're going, that's where the addition would be, to that side?
Where the existing addition is, that's where the addition would be.
Okay. So like this, this is existing?
Yes.
And this is over here is proposed addition?
Right.
Okay.
And that single-story connector is also proposed addition. So if you take off that 10-foot connector and what's to this side of it, that's all we do. Everything else is how the house originally existed.
I'm sorry, are there, do you have any existing condition drawings in the packet, sir?
I think we did submit that.
Let me see, I'm trying to keep it organized.
It's impossible.
Yeah, the double side of those.
Well.
Is this existing right now? This is the addition?
Okay. And there is the existing addition that's sort of here.
What, what is the intent? What are you trying to show with these orange boxes?
I think that's what is going to be removed. I mean, some of this was part of the back and forth with Steve to explain what was going on, but...
Well, a plan you're showing, a plan you're showing of existing, shown demolition would be helpful.
Yeah. I believe that was submitted.
You didn't draw them.
Yeah.
Do I? I'm looking for a sheet that says existing conditions. And it is not.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we have is this one. Actually, no, that's, that's additional.
The package was sent to the village.
Yeah, they were connected, including additions that you sent. I'm just going to pull it up on the website, because everyone's pages are in a row to see if maybe we're missing something. And you can look at what we have on and see if we can match them on the right.
Does the survey map show accurately the existing?
It's from the survey map.
Yes.
Right, okay, so this is, this is exactly what it looks like right now?
Yes, this is from when we bought the house.
Okay.
This I submitted originally before.
When did you guys buy the house?
In 2018.
Okay, nice.
So these are all aligned right here. That's the original house. They stuck this on, which is like a vaulted ceiling, story and a half family room. And then this is a powder room and a pantry that sticks out in the back.
It's the same thing. I took what I...
And then this is a porch.
That's a patio porch.
Yeah. So we would remove all of that. And then essentially put this going back to the original. So as Chuck, my architect, pointed out, there's a bay window here for the dining room. That'll be restored. And then this will all line up here. And then this can be...
Okay.
Personally, I have a, I have a hard time considering demolition if I don't have a, when, when the proposal is to build something new. When I have concerns with what's being proposed for the new. And I don't know if anybody else feels that way, but that's how I feel about it.
Yeah, no, this is, it's been a tough packet to review accurately for something of this size. And I think we have to consider demolition, approving demolition first, too.
I'm hitting this page of having both the existing and the proposed.
Are you going to print that real quick?
Yeah, I mean, it's in your packet, it's from the website, so, but I can...
I don't think it's in our packet.
Yeah, I think it is.
Fast, in the back, Virginia decided.
On the back of this? Yes, on the back of this. But again, there's no...
No, it does have, this just has the proposed.
Yes, there's no existing and proposed. And there's not a clear indication of what's new and what's not.
I think, let's go back to 34 Church that we just approved and kind of explain what, what is helpful in our... So this is, this, this is a right side existing and a right side proposed for us to... Like, that is, that's kind of what we're looking for. There's not a lot of existing information to understand what you're really changing and what we're really approving for demolition. And then for reconstruction on what's new.
So if I can remember, Sarah suggests she had difficulty with what is being proposed.
Yes, yes, I did.
Then if that's true with anyone else, maybe we turn this into a for information only and suggest what might be acceptable for...
A clear, better labeled set of plans?
I understand that part, but I'm wondering if you have a problem with the proposed design?
Yes, I do.
Then I think that's...
I don't. I don't have a problem with the proposed design, but I guess I'd want to see what it is that they're carrying there.
Right. But what I'm suggesting is that if there's a majority board that has a problem with the design, then you could turn this into a for information only.
Yeah.
And discuss the design difficulties, if there are, if there are, if there are not, for you.
Well, then I will, in that case, I will voice my objections. And if anyone agrees, fine. If nobody else agrees, fine. I have, I have concerns about the massing of this. I know and understand and have used myself a link to separate existing from new. That's a well-known, often-used preservation technique to clearly distinguish what's historic and what is new. What I am, what I have an objection to is that an addition to an existing historic structure should be not smaller than, but subservient to in a way. Subservient is not the right word.
Almost like an accent to it, but not equal.
Yes. The, the roof is, in my opinion, the roof line is too high. I would definitely like to see the pitch of the roof continued from existing to new. But it's very high. It's, it's a massing issue for me. This is, this is not subservient to, let me get... Let me just pull out the, our guidelines, which are quite eloquent. Yeah, they have bookmarks there already.
Specifically the additions. 34, we have multiple additions tonight.
Yep, thank you. These guidelines are available online also, gentlemen. I'm trying not to read the whole, the whole section to you, but I will. Design considerations for additions. Large visible additions to existing historic homes should be compatible with the character of the existing building and should reflect the area in which it was built. I agree, this does. It should not recreate the past or give a mistaken impression of false antiquity. Additions should not be so large that they change the orientation, general massing, or scale of the original building. So because you have the link, that's taken care of, too. Locate additions to historic buildings as inconspicuously as possible, usually to the rear or least public side of a building. That's not what's happening here, but that's...
That is actually what's happening. I think part of the problem is you're looking at it in two dimensions, where part of the house is in front and the part we're adding is literally in the farthest, most inconspicuous part of the lot.
But looking at the elevation drawing, that addition is still very high and very large. It's, I'm not going to guess at how large it is.
Well, I mean, it's more than...
It's the same height as the house. It looks like it's designed to be the same height as the house.
I know, but that's, that's what I'm objecting to. That's what I'm objecting to, as well as the fact that the addition is a little, it's hard to tell, at least half the size of the, of this adjacent elevation. I just think the addition is too high. I'm not, I... I guess I could see the width here, but it's too high. I recognize you're putting a guest bedroom up there, right? No? What's going up there?
Playroom.
Okay. I, it's still my opinion that it is too high.
At a meeting, I would recommend a field trip because I don't think you can appreciate the house in two dimensions.
Yeah. And we want to, we want to work with you to give you what you want to.
Really what we're putting in there is not that much bigger than what exists.
Yeah. For me, it's, it's tough to look at this and understand where this is. That, that's, that's what personally I'm looking for is, is understanding what we're looking at better.
Right.
And like, this is most likely the front of the house, which, which is unchanged?
Uh, well, there's that new dormer window.
Oh, the new dormer, okay, yeah.
But this is unchanged.
Yeah. Okay, so why don't we make a motion to table this to next meeting with better definitions of elevations with existing elevations of all four sides? And then...
Label the drawings.
Labeled and then proposed elevations next to them on all four sides. I would just also like to say that I personally, I would prefer to know more about what you explored in terms of before we even agree to a demolition.
Right.
You know, several months ago, as an example, a family came in. They wanted to add to their garage. You know, they weren't going to tear it down and just build the whole thing up. They were going to add to the top of it. We agreed to an addition because after inspection, the bones of it weren't sufficient to add to it, which was a valid reason to demolish it. Rather than just preference of design, I want to know what we're looking at in terms of other options before we go and agree to demolish what it is.
Yeah, I agree.
And it's possible if you have the as-is pictures, you can describe, you know, that it's an awkward, you know, configuration of rooms, you know, which makes it, you know, that you can't change or something. But if, without being able to see what the as-is is.
Some evidence for why the existing structure that was added in the 90s is not 1940s historic is...
Not even just why it's not 1940s historic, but just like...
No, why did we, why did we feel when we bought the house and still feel today that the addition they did in the 90s is not nice? It's not becoming of the house. It detracts from the house instead of adding to it. I mean, we can present evidence to that extent. Also have a question about, I mean, obviously you have to submit everything weeks before the meeting. Is it typical that you don't get any feedback only if you've submitted it to all of the meeting itself? Like...
Yes.
Yeah.
Even labeled, this isn't clear, all that stuff. This is more like a working meeting than a, we've reviewed everything, we understand it, and now we're going to talk to you about it.
Right. Yeah, it is typical that some folks will come in prior to submitting an application for information to have guidance prior to submitting their application.
Okay.
Especially if they're a big project.
Right, I thought all the back and forth with Steve was that guidance.
Yeah.
But I guess that's...
To a degree.
Misunderstood.
Yes, this board is the one that does the architectural approval. And without having a meeting, there's no way for them to work either like they are now. And they have, they have to have that meeting publicly.
Yeah. Just for a public record, on all meetings, we have, what do we call it? We have open discussion or from information only, where this is what we would do is, what Jeff said, we turn this into an information only is talk about what you would want out of an addition or what you're able to do, or maybe some guidance from the board before you went into an official meeting for an approval. So it just is like, you know, a meeting before that without a vote of approval or not, but just more of a for information.
All right, so that submitting everything ahead of time is not because you guys meet and actually look at this stuff before?
No, it's so Alexandra can get a general pass.
It has to be before, so much time.
I have to check it for...
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice if you...
So yeah, obviously this board, what we want to do is, is get you to your addition and make, but we just, we need to make sure it meets all of our guidelines and it's what you want, but also what the village allows, so.
Allows or wants?
No, no, allows. It's not a want by the village.
Okay.
It's allowed.
There's guidelines that have been agreed.
Like the height of the roof.
Demolishing an existing structure is a big, I mean, it's, you know, otherwise people would be just like, yeah, I just want to knock down this house, right? So that's, that's a big step to take.
There, there are guidelines. There are official guidelines that have been adopted by the board. They're available easily online if you want to read what they say about...
There's a section about demolition.
Additions and demolition and windows and siding.
Yeah.
And all those things, including sections on age of the buildings when they were built. So that you have some guidelines through that.
I'm motioning, from what we've gathered, I imagine that you'd like us to table it. Is that factual?
As opposed to vote on it?
Yeah, we'll table it.
Well, it doesn't seem like you guys see the...
I can't make that decision for you.
...项目的project, so yeah.
Well, I'm not sure anybody's at this point willing to make it.
Well, and that's not our decision. Yeah.
Well, no, no, but it...
It's your decision.
Well, yeah.
I do have a motion to defer by Member Olson right now.
Can I second, did I second it?
I think you're seconded, yeah.
Second.
Member Zara?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dobrowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Is there any reason to schedule a site visit with the applicant?
I went today and I drove up the street and it's a beautiful house, truly nice property.
Did you see how the addition is...
Yeah, it's definitely tough to see. It's in the backside, yeah. I went. I don't need to go on a field trip if you guys want to.
No, I just wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to speak to the board at the site.
I would love to meet you guys out there because I really don't think that the two-dimensional east elevation gives you a good feel for the massing of the house.
I think in the case of the demolition, the board ought to go extra steps.
Okay.
Yeah.
When do we plan it? Do we plan it between now and the next meeting? Do we plan it on the day of the next meeting and meet there like we did when we went to the bank? We met on the same day?
Whatever you want. Seems to me that, I'm sorry, Kenny.
I was just going to say, I think going before the next meeting so that any input...
Right, but that was my question, before the meeting or on the day of the meeting? Like when we went to the bank?
No, I mean before, before the meeting so that the applicant and his architect can respond if that's appropriate.
All right, so the next meeting is June 17th, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah. The soonest I'm thinking is June 4th, June 6th. That's a Tuesday or a Thursday. Our recording secretary will be available.
I can theoretically make the 4th work.
Tuesday and 4th.
I don't believe we've had the recording secretary attend our site visit in the past.
It's a...
It is.
So yeah, it has to be, yeah.
Well, because the house we...
All it has to happen is that somebody admits what's going on. It doesn't necessarily have to be the recording secretary. And if there's any vote or anything of the sort, then you just record it. And I don't, I think we've done site visits before without records.
Oh, I, the couple that was here already, I said I've seen this house. Oh, yeah, we've been to the, we've been there and no one was there.
If I'm off duty, I don't mind if someone else wants to take notes, but we can set the motions.
Steve has a question.
Yeah, Steve?
If there's more than two members at once, doesn't it have to be public notice?
Sure.
Yes. It has to be public notice, but we don't need to have the secretary to the board.
All right, so June 4th?
Is it Tuesday?
June 4th is a Tuesday?
What time?
Um, it's usually...
I could do any time, I could.
Do you guys want to do?
I can't do anything between 1:00 and 4:00.
Uh, 5:00, 5:30?
Yeah, 5:00.
Yeah, definitely after a workhouse.
It's 5:30, we'll keep it at 5:30?
Yeah, 5:30.
Okay.
Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay.
Eastview Terrace, right?
Yes, 25 Eastview Terrace, south.
5:30 we read? Tuesday, June 4th at 5:30?
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate your willingness to work with us.
Absolutely.
Sure.
As do you guys. All right, we'll do 59 State Street, the retaining wall.
Hey, I brought a couple full-size boards, their drawings. Is there a preference by the board numbers as to whether I lay them on an area table or leave them in front of me?
This is the recording device, so I can put it on there.
Sure.
Sure does look like you need a new retaining wall.
So I just want to introduce myself. Hello, my name is Francis Zara. I'm a senior project manager from R Engineer and representing the project applicant, Mary Dick. He's here with us tonight for the project at 59 State Street. As you were alluding to, ultimately right adjacent to the Erie Canal Trail. On the State Street side is the retaining wall on site that falls within Canal Corp. property. You can see the property line presented by the dash line. There's a portion of some rear property improvements that also fall within Canal Corp. property.
I'm sorry, could you indicate the dash line for the Canal Corporation property again?
Yes, so this blue line of record, as it's called now, clips a portion of the frame garage shed behind it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
A portion of patio improvements back here and entirety of the existing retaining wall. There is an existing use and occupancy permit between the property owner and Canal Corp. for those structures. between the property owner and Canal Corp. for those structures. It's mainly the structure that's about 3 or 4 feet. It does get somewhat close, you know, regionally here where it's gravelled. It's that retaining wall that is currently subject to shelliers. Of the board members, did you have a chance to visit the site?
Oh yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So do you own the property?
Unfortunately, no.
Oh, interesting.
We're going to be making like a $65,000 investment in property we don't own.
May I ask a question regarding approval by the Canal Corporation? Is that, is that required?
See, I called this afternoon, our engineers looked at it. Canal Corp. would sign up on it, is that right?
You're right.
Kevin Carrance is the member within Canal Corp. that's been coordinating our application. There have been some comments that have been handled thus far. We haven't received a completed review from them just yet, so the permitting is still ongoing with Canal Corp.
We got the permit from the council?
They're working on that.
Bless you.
Bless you. We got the SHPO approval, but they're working on it now.
Anyways.
What approval does SHPO?
They wrote a letter.
Bless you.
Their effect signed in letter with respect to the archaeological and historical resources on the property. Essentially that there would be...
It's like an environmental impact thing.
Yeah, so ultimately, it's the entire length on the northwest side of the, there here, heading up towards the bridge, region where the path splits. It's that entire length that's proposed to be replaced with a rockery type of peonage wall made up of guillotines that you missed from Sensinex. Now, is that lying?
Somewhere it says granite, but it doesn't look like granite.
Where did you say this, did you say, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Did the sign, did you say where the stone is coming from?
Sensinex? Is that the pronunciation of Sensinex? I'm not sure. In company.
Oh, is...
Oh, yeah.
Is there a type?
Yes, it's the guillotine type.
No, what is, is it granite, is it limestone, is it something else?
It says, "A construction of rockery-type gravity-retaining wall used of Sensinex guillotine boulders for approval of what work to be done by..."
Well, I'm not, I'm not familiar with the stone type. That's why I'm asking.
This is the company where they're buying it from?
Correct.
Yes.
I get that.
Okay, correct, yeah.
But that's not the same thing as limestone or granite?
Yes, so within the engineering report for the replacement wall ancient people will find images that were provided to us by the supplier for that guillotine type product.
These guys? Is this what you mean?
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Here's what I'm asking. If it's limestone, I want to know where they're getting it because it's hard to find limestone of sizes like this. That the, and I, just for the side. It does look similar to the big chunks of limestone that were used for the locks in the canal in the past.
We've been trying, despite the fact that this is the one that's nugget for us in terms of financial cost, we've been trying to go out of our way to make it as pleasant and appealing as possible. There's a lot of pedestrians that pass by our property and instead of doing it in brick or precast pavers or some sort of thing like that, or even going back to original railroad ties, which was a possibility, we decided, no, let's take the right road and do this in a nice way for the village.
No, I appreciate the stone. And in my work life, I, on several occasions, hunted for limestone to replace existing limestone in a building or a bridge or something like that. Can't find it. It's, because what was all, what was used along the Erie Canal is all out of the Niagara escarpment. It's all nice limestone out of the escarpment, but nobody's quarreling it now. And the quarries that are quarrying it, that are quarrying, quarrying similar limestone, crush it up for gravel.
Yeah, so can I just, I'm a geologist by background, so guillotine refers to the locks, the cut of the stone, not the stone.
There is a range of dimensions with respect to height, width, and length. One can say 30 to 48 inches.
It says here under proposed materials, any granite boulder. A lot of times, lake people call it a rock, so I don't know. But I'm assuming that this is an engineering thing that somebody, that it's actually granite, granite, which is a rock type, some limestone, granite. Which is fine, I mean, it's more actually more...
Granite is more durable.
More durable, yeah.
Fence replacement? You're going to do a fence replacement?
Yeah, we did a fence replacement, keeping with the current fence.
Okay, same height, same everything like that, replacing kind?
Again, we tried to make it...
Yeah. And would that fence height elevate at all? Are you guys going to build that up or are you going to leave it low so you can still have sightline?
No, we did a fence height. It's about the same height.
Nice.
It's a perfect height, actually, if you're standing, you're sitting up in the patio.
So you can't see anybody but you can see the canal?
You can see the canal.
Yeah. That'd be an ideal height.
Well, I applaud your effort and expense.
Yeah, it's a beautiful home.
Yeah, it's a repair.
I appreciate that. It means, you know, it's a jewel, we want to keep it up.
It is.
We have a house that's, you know, we love and we want to make sure of it.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Have we...
You're the one that did the fence for your neighbor?
Jeff, what?
No.
It's the same style, isn't it?
Yes, he made sure it's the same style.
Yeah.
Jeff? If Canal Corporation approval, final approval is required and it's not yet obtained, can we make a decision?
Pending.
Yeah, it's only village boards, other village boards who vote before you that if they're not done, you can't make a decision.
Well, I wouldn't want to approve something on Canal Corporation property and then have them say, you didn't have the authority to do that. I'm not worried about the boards, I'm worried about the Canal Corp.
We have the authority to do that.
Okay.
Whether or not, I mean...
I'm just looking out for the board.
Obviously, Canal Corp. has got to allow us to do this, but they're not going anywhere without Canal Corp. approval. So.
You'll see that.
It's located in our village and it's an architectural feature, so we have jurisdiction and the ability to approve it provided there are no other village boards that need to approve it. And our approval may be with nothing in Canal Corp.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be sure we were not stepping outside our...
No.
The other thing we're trying to do is...
Area of authority.
Is to get this done as soon as possible because if we could get it done before the heat of the summer or the pedestrian traffic reaches, maybe that would be to everyone's benefit. So we'll try to press a point to Canal Corporation that approves everyone to get this done as soon as possible.
Is it actually going to block the path? You're going to have to...
No, Canal Corp., they won't let us block the path. It would be very, it would be advantageous to us and probably reduce the cost, but now we'll have to get the path open during construction.
Yes, so there's that sort of, that's a full detail. Let's write on the bottom of our sheets a huge honor and that restriction of the path, that would be kept in mind.
I see.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve. Before you do that, I was curious about the staircase here. Is that also going to be in kind with the wood block and then pavers?
So that's stage two, when we can save our pennies and afford to do that for it. But for right now, that's what we got.
Got it. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Contingent.
Contingent?
Well, no.
It's not a contingent, it's not contingent about Canal Corp. It's were approved within our village.
It has to be Canal Corp.
Approving the architectural...
It is an approval, so the last year and, you know, if it takes that long, I hope it'll still be in place.
Do we need a copy of the permanent ones they do, the permit?
No, I don't think so because this is completely invented.
Yeah, this has nothing to do with our board or our town.
Approving the design, architectural...
People would like it from this board.
Oh, I meant, I'm a geologist, I would, but yeah. Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So for the record, I noticed...
Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you.
This is a...
Wait, we have, somebody has...
So for the record, I noticed there was a part one of a seeker form in there, but the word for this board is type two for seeker.
Do we just put that in a motion?
No. Stay, stay near the word, that's why I told them to do the seeker.
Sounds good.
Great, thank you, hon.
Finding a fax...
It's a real mitzvah.
Finding a fax that improves the existing property. It's in accordance with our village guidelines.
The material proposed is appropriate for the canal setting, historic canal setting.
Thank you. And has no lasting effect on the resource.
No negative impact on the historic resource.
We'll do four Courtney Circle.
Alexandria, do you have the...
Yes, I do, yeah.
I didn't have that letter in my pocket.
No, you're right.
I have, I made extra copies in case someone was up top, so...
I'd be curious, anybody else want to read this?
Yeah.
Can I have this?
You're welcome.
Hi.
How are you?
Good, thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Jenny.
Tell us a little bit about what we're looking at.
I am hoping to get permission to recreate the six remaining original windows on my quarter of our house over on 48 Circle. I was last in front of this for March 8, 2021, and we did our rear addition. And I put the exact same windows that I asked you for permission to install on the home then I was approved. And the windows that we put in were on the rear and the side of our home. And it had to come before the board. We talked about it because you could see these from the rear side of Courtney Circle, so we had a lot of discussion about it. So I'm just hoping to get the six remaining original windows to match the ones that I put in in 2021. And they are wood interior, exterior of my products. They're Marvin elevates. It's a fantastic product. Our current windows have seen better days. They're no longer functional and useful and they have no visual value. So I'm hoping that we can get permission just to replace these out.
And any questions? Anybody else have any questions? Very straightforward when you have a note from Lake Hell. The only thing that was on there, it says 13 Maplewood Avenue and then it says 12 Austin Park. I was just kind of confused about...
I don't even know...
Is that just from this?
He's labeling the photos, I think, and it got unformed out. Yeah.
And then this, okay. I think that just, that was not on the question, like what's going on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
He probably wrote the same date to the...
Yeah.
Or used the same photo.
Yeah.
Yeah, but he's got the papers.
What is the exterior material again, Maggie?
Cedar.
Cedar. Interior is cedar. Oh, I meant the window.
Windows.
Oh, window is exterior, exterior fiberglass.
Latch, fiberglass, it's wood latches.
It is a Marvin elevated, it's a nice product.
Yep.
Any questions? Make a motion to approve the application as presented.
Member Dubrasky?
Aye.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Aye.
Member Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Did you know that this house was designed by Stevens and Burton?
I don't know who Stevens, I was looking at it, but I found the packet.
I don't know, is, did I bring an extra copy of the Little Red Book here?
Did they expand the neighborhood?
They've done, they did several houses in the neighborhood. There are, there are a few architect-designed houses in that neighborhood. The one that had the fire?
Yep.
Architect design.
There's something about four models in that whole neighborhood, so I'm not sure if they were all...
No, I don't, I don't know.
My dad doesn't know, well, my dad's former parent, he knew I was coming, so he wanted to...
Oh, nice. He would have been our fifth if he didn't resign.
Oh, he misses you a lot.
I know.
He misses that too.
Let me see.
Do a lot of square.
So Stevens and Burton did the Metropolitan Life Insurance Building, Sibley Building, 550 Main Street East Covenant, oh, Convent, sorry, St. Jerome's Church, married student housing at Robert's Wesleyan. And then, are you familiar with this book?
No, it's St. Jerome's Church in Rochester?
Pardon me?
St. Jerome's Church in Rochester.
Uh, does not say that. Architects, Architecture and Architects of Rochester, New York, Carl Stern, Carl Stern, Carl Schmidt. It lists, it's got some general information first, but it lists the architects separately and then confirms what their work was.
I'll have to get it. Thank you, Paul.
I'll tell you what.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Let me know if you don't, if you don't find one and I'll put it in my will that you can hear mine. Because nobody in my family wants it afterwards.
43 State Street?
I want to get out of your room.
You got any lights?
I'll give you my, I'll give you my husband, but you can...
Do your lights.
They called for your address earlier, you didn't say anything. Did they call one casket?
No, we're together.
Oh, okay. I'm trying to remember where...
I heard it all when I talked to you.
Oh, okay.
And the following, something...
Well, good evening.
Good evening.
Tell us a little bit about your application.
So we own 43 State Street, and would you like to put a light on the front for safety reasons?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good idea.
Interesting that there wasn't one now already.
Yeah, there was, I mean, houses on both sides of us has one, have one.
I like them.
Yeah, so my question is, what is your preference? Because you said one over the top or on the left personally? If you wanted it on the side, I feel like it would just be more appropriate to have two?
Yeah, I had the same thought, if you put them on the side.
I would disagree with that. I would disagree with having two.
We walked through the village and we saw, up above, we saw two and we saw one.
Yeah.
And what I wanted to do, and I'm open to, was to give it to our contractor and say, which is easier? I think above is the easier one.
Yeah. My, my comment was going to be almost like a dealer's choice, and then also what's easier? And then work it into the motion on where it's mounted, as far as height and relative location to the door and to the overhang. So those are my only comments, it's, I guess.
Didn't bother us.
I think he's saying we can approve either.
Yeah, you pick.
You had to tell us what you want, we can't just arbitrarily say whatever.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we went above?
I think above.
My wife is making the motion above.
Okay. Yeah, any questions about the style, the style seems very nice?
Yeah, we like those a lot.
Yeah.
That's what everyone else had.
Yeah, I like the glass, the bubble glass.
Yeah. So if you'd like it over top, any other questions?
Well, I mean, if the contractor says he can't do it on top and he wants to do it on the side, do we want to make him come back, or can we just approve it either way?
Great point.
I'm going to get the time to watch the work.
Yeah.
I think that would be logical, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Either, either location proposed.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, is this like, circle there?
No, he's got, look, he's got this very nice. Well, I just hear him, that's fine.
We've, we've sent people home for showing us drawings like that, by the way.
Oh, but what about these measurements? Come on, he's got all the numbers.
If you did have this, you would have been sent home.
It's labeled, Jenny, with numbers.
I don't, I don't care.
Well, he doesn't have to roll his eyes. Seriously, we've sent a lot of people home over drawings like that, without drawings like that. I'm, I'm comfortable with both locations, yeah.
I am.
Besides, I know locations.
I just didn't know if anybody. Yeah, we usually count out what clavard, or a height, or center.
I'm open, above the door would be centered.
Yeah.
And I'm open to what clapboard range.
It looks one below where the eve ends.
And look at the pictures of the line.
Fair, here.
Well, it looks like, are you talking about?
See that little black dot?
Yes, but it looks like it's two, the second clavard is below.
Those measures, once I hear, so, someone's giving me credit for something, but I'm fine, I'm fine with that. Let me just show my boss.
One, one below there again, Jenny. So then.
We'll be above first. Proving where, if we don't do it above.
Oh.
Can we describe it in one?
This is the one at Ensign, there's one, no, one, one below would be here.
Two below. One at Ensign, am I right?
I think it's two below.
Two below.
Can, can I loan you my glasses?
Yeah.
I would say Sedon, as per Sedon, the application.
Would we really be that strict in about people's applications, really?
Pretty much, that's kind of the range where it was when we went through the neighborhood.
Now we kind of have to. It's kind of clear from, you know, that they're, you know, I'm not going to put it like at waist height or something.
Nothing hilarious.
You have to, you have to have an accurate physical record for every single application, because if you don't, then somebody with a big project is going to come in with a drawing like that and say, well, you let, you let this guy put his lights on, and that was the only thing they had. It's consistency, it's everybody has to be exactly the, every applicant has to be treated the same, and you can't.
Yeah, you can't, you have to call it up.
Do it any other way, or else it's being arbitrarily capricious.
Is it fair to say that you are centering it on that 16 inches?
Wouldn't be bad at 16 inches.
So it looks from the, from the molding to the end of the eve, it, it says it's 16 inches?
I'm not sure who, I did not do these measurements.
But we, we need to nail it down.
You could say it's centered between, between the, between the door trim, the door casing, and the bottom of the rakeboard. The board, this board, goes vertical, is the rakeboard.
The only question I have is, if I'm looking at this, this dot looks like it's between two clapboards, and I'm not sure.
No, I think it's on the second.
It's on the second?
Yep.
Hand, hand, it's triple.
Okay, so then it's on the second, even stays between the end of the wood of the door jamb and the roofline.
And again, that's if, for whatever reason, that just makes more sense.
Yep.
Yeah, we just want to make sure. And then if it's on top, it'll be centered.
Yep.
Completely centered vertically and horizontally?
Yes. The only question I have.
We opened that door, I mean, I don't know.
The only question I have with that is the clearance for the door to, well, the door opens in, so that's on.
You should be fine, this is, what, 10 inches? You got 23 of above the door?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay.
23, not including the molding apparently? Yeah, you'll be good. So, motion to approve, conditional, as the applicant preference would be above the door, centered. But also conditionally approved if that is not viable on the left side, second clavard from the eve, centered.
Got it.
I'll second that motion.
Can I make a point of clarification?
Yep.
Because I just want to make sure, when I say centered above the door, I'm talking in this range, I just want to make sure you're not thinking centered above here.
No, we are. We are centered. That's what I'm asking about, both vertically and horizontally.
That's why. But it's one of them. I originally was thinking when we said centered, it was going to be here.
Don't say centered, are we talking about the actual mounted door?
On the clapboard.
Yes.
Yeah.
How tall is, how tall is the fixture?
Right here.
Yeah. So, yeah, you're centering it between there and there, not that, yeah, as long as we get, that will go in the middle.
Statistically, that was much better.
I wasn't even thinking about it, I'm fine with that.
Reporting annulated certificate of appropriateness that we'll have to give to our contractor.
Okay, perfect.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. My pleasure. One gasket.
Not here.
You have to find these facts, oh, finding the fact. Improves the usability of the historic resource without any permanent damage. In accordance with the design guidelines for material and location.
No, I'm trying to figure out if I said all this.
Okay, they're not, it's very confusing, let me, let me help you.
No kidding.
Remember when I asked about double-sided, and I was like, yeah, let's do it, it sounds like it's.
No, no, it's fine, I'm just trying, I've got, no, I've gotten that it's double-sided, what I'm trying to figure out is, have I got multiple copies of the same thing? I'm looking at the.
I didn't get the message about the procedure and the number.
Is there a procedural issue, or can they just re-present it?
No, it's not procedural, we can't just, we can't decide without them.
It was one gasket that told me they were coming at 6 o'clock, not 43. So.
So they knew it was.
They knew there was a meeting, yes, I don't know why they didn't come, I told them they can join online, but they didn't call.
Well, we still got to go through minutes, and then if they show up, they show up. Before we get to minutes, as a member item, I, I was just curious, and it might be outside of our purview, but our blue sheets were last referenced 20 years ago. Is there a process to have those re-reviewed, photographed? Is that something we would need to initiate, or is that the board?
That was happening.
Is it already?
Those, those documents have been incorporated, the, the information on those documents has been recorded in the National Register nomination. Because this was all, all those blue forms were done in preparation for a National Register district listing.
Right, '76, but then they also went back and re-photographed things in 2004. Yep. So I'm just wondering if we need to start to consider re.
Re-fotographing?
Exactly. Yes, Steve?
I probably have 98% of every home in this village.
These, these two are exactly.
I re-photographed in the April, in the spring of 21. I have a folder file with every, pretty much every house in the village, so that when people go, it was always here, I can go, no.
Yeah. So is that something we need to formally enter into the historic record? Anything? What do you want to do? I just feel like we're looking at, you know, reference photos from 20 years ago, that it might just help to have the updated reference photos.
Well, we were supposed to go look at the buildings.
But, you know, not for now, but for five years from now, for 10 years from now. Like, you know, that, that seems to be something that should be an ongoing thing, not just kind of arbitrarily done in '76 and 2004.
Well, I think it's possible, you'd have to go, you'd have to look at the National Register nomination forms again, I don't remember when that happened. That's, that may be why there are 2004 photographs.
That's like re.
Because new photographs were taken. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
The expansion happened later than 2000.
The expansion happened later than that, and the, and the designation was way earlier than that.
Yeah, versus that.
I don't know why.
The file on the computer that was 2006, when they kind of redid all the files for the homes, and, and kind of put all their information together.
And is that something we would need to like allocate from a budget perspective, for you to have the time to do that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I guess that's something I ask the board.
Hey, I don't see any reason why, if Steve, Stephen certified that these are pictures of all of the houses in the village, except whatever date they are, you can just make it part of your, get adopted as part of your materials.
Yeah. I think, I mean, not for us today, but for the board in five years. Yeah, makes sense. Cool. Okay, let's do minutes, we're going to, since it's double-sided, I'm going to guide us through this. Okay, so we're going to start with Monday, February 26th, it's three pages. Thanks, Skipper.
It's three pages, Monday, February 26th?
Yes.
Okay, I, I have one, two.
You have two, and then.
And then I have, this is also February 26th, I have one and two.
It starts with Mike Rookis, ends with 5 State Street.
Virginia has two copies of that.
I have two copies of that page. I know I'm a little thick tonight, but I'm not.
No, that's all right, it's organized.
I am missing.
There's one next to the baseball field. Okay, Carolina, here you go. This is one and two.
Okay.
And then Virginia, find one that says three.
Two.
Yeah, hold that right there.
This is three, but it's April 15th.
Okay, put it over the right.
This is two, April 15th, I'm doing that. But I have, I have a two and a, I have a one and a four.
That's all right, put that one over to the right also.
This is for the 29th, 15th, 15th.
We need a.
Do you want to just all of them on the packet, Virginia, on the computer?
I'll share, I can share.
Yeah, you could, you could review this if you want to. This is what we're reviewing right here, one, two, and three of February 26th. I reviewed, I personally don't have any issues with this one. Yeah. Motion to accept the minutes for February 26th, I'll second that.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
And member Olson?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
And then, member Torres, you want to abstain?
Yeah, I wasn't there. Thank you for that.
Member Torres? Abstain?
Abstain, okay.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next one we're going to is Monday, April 15th. It is one page, two page, three and four page.
Oh, no, wait a minute, here I go.
Yep.
I have one, no, this is three, but this is, okay, one.
Yep, one, two, then flip it.
Three.
Three, and then the four is right.
This is it, okay, got it. Thanks, guys.
Okay, so. Okay, I had an issue on 10 South Street, the shed. The findings of facts, it says meets the design guidelines for signs, this might have been a copy paste or a wrong entry, but we need to fix this.
Right?
Yeah, he wanted.
I don't know what it is, it's, but it's, but it's a finding of facts or incorrect, it says signs.
Right, so it should be sheds.
Okay. Yeah, that's the only. Okay, anybody else?
Nope.
Oh, so are we missing the findings of facts for 31 Main Street and door? But no, we tabled that, there was a motion to table, so we didn't need to.
The next minute.
Okay, thank you, we tabled that, so we didn't need a findings of facts. Okay.
Then it appears on the 29th, special meetings.
Yeah.
100% of our work.
Okay, great. So let's make a motion to approve Monday, April 15th, the minutes with the stated changes.
Second.
And member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then for the third one, we have the Village of Pittsburgh Historic Preservation Board's special meeting of Monday, April 29th, of which the four of us were present. Oh, Carolina, you were at some, I'm sorry. So you have to stand. Oh, yeah, no, we do have, we do have.
Well, three of us can vote.
And this is just a one page, special meeting?
Yep.
Yep.
Got it.
And I didn't see anything wrong. Motion to accept the minutes?
Second. Okay, now, so member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Abstaining.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn the meeting for five minutes.
Oh. Oh, you're great.
We don't need to motion to adjourn for five minutes, do we? Okay. I'll second your motion for five minutes adjournment.
Member Sarah?
I'm sorry, what are we voting on?
To.
I could break it, tell the.
The other applicant's on the way.
I know, but we don't need to motion to wait.
That's what I said. We don't need everything we're going to chit chat about for the next five minutes to be on the record.
That's exactly right.
Yes.
I'm not saying anything.
Do you vote?
I second that, oh, it was our.
Yeah, I second you.
I'm going to keep my mouth shut, while we're.
We need to vote.
Um, motion, yes, no, abstain?
All right, okay.
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubrasky?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I like the door.
All right, so I'll make a, are you ready, Alexandria?
I am.
All right, I'll make a motion to reopen the meeting.
Second.
Oh, you put that in time.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dobrasky?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Debbie, are you going to, what material is the door? Is it wood?
Steel.
Steel. Are you, is it going to state its color?
Um, the color is almost identical to where our house is, however...
That's what I thought, looking, I can just see a peek there.
We've got to paint our house next year anyway, so I would match it.
Well, the other, the other thing I'm thinking, looking at the photograph, is that, this is really nice tuck pointing on the, on the masonry of the garage and the mortar. It looks like the door is pretty close to the color of the mortar.
It's, it matches beautifully, surprisingly enough.
So, so in my opinion, it's a good color.
Yes.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't paint it something else.
No, I would paint the house...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To match the door next year. Or, or keep it the same, I don't, I don't know, it depends.
Yeah, so that's all up to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I also think that the, even if you paint the house and even if you paint the, the wall above the garage door, because the door is so close to the color of the mortar, I wouldn't, I don't think I would paint the door.
Oh, we'll never paint the door.
Yeah, okay.
My only question was a reason for a new door and I always felt that you were given it or...
Yeah, for different buyers' remorse, well, I did, five years ago.
Yeah.
We, we came before you guys, not you, um, you.
I was...
Nice to see you, but anyway, um, my, it just, it just was one of those things that it was a bad decision.
Yeah.
And, um, so this became an opportunity for us to acquire this door and surprisingly, it was perfect because our house is a carriage house.
Yeah.
And this is called a carriage door. And it was what I always wanted, but the price was out of our range, you know, at the time.
It's well-known, yeah.
Isn't it?
Yes, it's...
Yeah, looks good, it looks very nice.
It's way more appropriate for the building than, than the other one.
Yes.
There's nothing to do with the approval, but I think, is that, well, I guess it could, but is that hardware or is that, like, are those handles, are those physical handles?
I think so, yeah, there, it's hardware.
Yeah.
Does, is it...
But it still is like a...
Is it an overhead door?
An overhead door, right, yeah, it just made to look like.
Yeah, it's just...
Yes.
Yeah.
It's for looks.
Oh, yeah, especially, yeah, because you got the handle on the bottom too, yeah.
It's for looks, not function.
Very nice.
Any other questions?
Motion to accept the application as presented.
I'll second.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dobrasky?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Yay, thank you so much, my dreams come true.
But in fact, that is being placed in kind...
Yeah, it was worth it.
With a design that is more fitting with the house.
Yes.
To our guidelines. And with that, I motion close the meeting.
Thank you so much for staying longer, I really appreciate it. And for your call, we're only... You guys have been amazing from Dave Luntz Co.
Well, my name, yes.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you all for standing here.